Bible class shall resume as per usual. For those who were a part of worship this morning, whether directly or indirectly, the story were all extremely encouraged by the message and a part of what we've been trying to to get done in this Bible class is that kind of interpersonal relationship. So no longer keeping each other at arm's length. Metaphorically speaking, of course, we still need to do that literally because of Covid, but trying to get closer to one another. And as Brother Grenner said in his message, that doesn't mean that you have to be chummy with everyone. That doesn't mean that you have to be close to everyone. That doesn't mean that everyone is who you share now, the things that you struggle with. But if we all strive to have someone that we're close to, then we will be close to someone who we can share and that person will also be close to someone else that they can point you to if you need assistance. So let us use this time period of literal distance to try and forge some closeness. Let me get my screen up. Alright, for those who weren't here on Tuesday, we are in green apostles. Literally speaking, as we have moved into another diagnosis of the sheep. Quick recap, we have been looking, the study is lost, a case study. We have been focused in Luke chapter 15, where we've been looking at the parable of the lost things. The sheep, the coin and the son. And we've started with the sheep and we've been using a three-pronged approach. So as to study the scripture, we've been looking at diagnosis, where we have been looking at the characters involved, the things that they struggle with and identifying them. Then we have been correlating by looking at ourselves and identifying if the things that these characters struggle with are in any way similar to the things that we struggle with. And then finally, we've been looking at prescription, where having identified the issues that we struggle with, we've been trying to find scriptural-led, practical ways of combating these issues. So we've looked at two of the diagnoses of the sheep thus far. Point for those who can raise their hand and tell me what those two diagnoses are thus far. Okay, no surprise there, go ahead, Mr Smith. Is that Smith? You need to unmute.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Scattered brain syndrome.
And?
Bug.
Alright, excellent, excellent. So we've looked at scattered brain syndrome, which what we identified as a correlation to us is where we lack focus or clarity as a result of our understanding of the word. And that usually stems into our behaviour. And then we look at the bug, which spoke to hesitancy and course correction as a result of worry and doubt. And what we have now been, we moved on to since Tuesday is what we call grazer's grief. And grazer's grief speaks to us prioritizing things that shouldn't be prioritized or wandering as a result of focusing too heavily on particular things. So it speaks to being distracted by things that in and of themselves aren't bad, by things that more often than not are necessary. But in our preoccupation, it either takes us to a place where we should not be or we end up missing out on things that we should be doing. Alright, so we looked at the diagnosis in sheep, where we saw that when sheep so far from, when sheep graze, their heads are down primarily and they wander as they eat because they eat so quickly. Those are two symptoms that we found of grazer's grief, head downedness and wandering. And we saw that in ourselves as Christians as well, where head downedness speaks to us becoming either poor prioritizers, so we're putting things first that shouldn't be first, or we have, we are too busy. So we end up with too many things to do, so we aren't able to pay attention to what is really important. And then wandering now, speaking to when we allow greed or a lack of contentment to lead us to places that we shouldn't be. So greed to acquire things or a lack of contentment based on what we have, leading us to us wandering, moving to a place to get more of the things that we should already be satisfied with or should have a different motive in mind of acquisition. So we looked at some cases, the first one we looked at was of Martha. And the situation was where Mary and Martha were with Jesus. Mary was listening to Jesus's words, whereas Martha was making preparations, I presume food-wise or a house-wise etcetera. And Martha was doing everything on her own and Martha got upset and she said to Jesus, that tell my sister to help me. And Jesus was telling her that, boy, you're preoccupied with the wrong things because the most important things are my words, you should do as Mary does and focus on the things that are most important. So Jesus here letting Martha know that she was not prioritizing what she should have been prioritizing. So we saw that she was suffering from grazer's grief. Then we looked at the rich fool. And since we haven't answered the questions in that regard as yet, I'm just going to ask for three readers. Let's raise your hand. So I see Brother Smith's mic up, so I presume that's his hand. Brother Lacount's hand is up as well. I need one more person. Alright, and Brother David. So Brother Smith, you are yellow. Brother Lacount, you are green again, I think. And Brother David, you are portraying Jesus, so you are red. Alright, Brother Trevor, you can start us off.
Then one from the crowd said to him, "Teacher, tell my brother to divide the inheritance with me."
What he said to them, to him?
"Man, who made me a judge and arbitrator over you?"
And he said to them,
"Take heed and beware of covetousness. One's life does not consist in the abundance of the things he possesses."
Then he spoke a parable to them, saying,
"The ground of a certain rich man yielded plentifully."
Oh, sorry, sorry, give me another gun.
And he thought to himself, saying,
"What shall I do, since I have no room to store my crops?"
So he said,
"I will do this, I will pull down my barns and build greater. And there I will store all my crops and my goods. And I will say to my soul, soul, you have many goods laid up for many years. Take your ease, eat, drink and be merry."
What God said to him?
"Fool, this night your soul will be required of you." Then those, then whose will those things be with who have provided?
So is he who lays up treasure for himself and is not rich toward God?
Alright, thank you, thank you, well read. Every time we have the scripture read it divided amongst people, I start to think that, boy, you know, they could do a Bible ebook and see if we can, we can get that done. So all those who have time on their hands and have these wonderful voices, that is, that is an option for us. For the rich fool, would you diagnose the rich fool with grazer's grief? Verse? Yeah, Arne?
Yes.
Alright, so Brother Smith and Britannia, Britannia, you agree?
Yes, I do.
Alright. What symptoms did he show book? Head downedness, wandering or both? Anybody from book? Remember, head downedness is when you show poor prioritization or you're overly busy, as seen in purple down here, and greediness or lack of contentment is wandering. Anybody from book going once? Okay, I see Brother Jason, go ahead.
He struggled with proper prioritization, he prioritized his own fleshly stuff.
Okay, so head downedness then.
Yeah.
And chapter, what were the causes of these symptoms?
As Brother Jason just said, struggles with proper prioritization.
Alright, David wrapping it up there. Alright, so we'll have one more, one more case that we want to look at and these are the feast absconders. And for those with limited vocabularies like myself, one who absconds is an individual that doesn't go to something that they were invited to or should have shown up at. So we're going to need four readers. Raise your hands please, alright, so Sister Tessa, Sister Britannia, two more readers. Sister Althea. And Sister Tammy. I like it, I like it, a family reunion plus Brit. Alright, so Sister Tessa, you are yellow. Sister Britannia, you are green. Sister Smith, you will be portraying Jesus in red. And Sister Tammy, you are blue. Alright, you can get us started, Sister Tessa.
Now, when one of those who sat at the table with him heard these things, he said to him, "Blessed is he who shall eat bread in the kingdom of God." Then he said to him, "A certain man gave a great supper and invited many and sent his servant at suppertime to say to those who were invited, 'Home, for all things are now ready.'" But they all with one accord began to make excuses. The first said to him, "I have bought a piece of ground and I must go and see it. I ask you to have me excused." And another said, "I have bought five yolk of oxen and I'm going to test them. I ask you to have me excused." Still another said, "I have married a wife and therefore I cannot come." So that servant came and reported these things to his master. Then the master of the house, being angry, said to his servant, "Go out quickly into the streets and lanes of the city and bring in here the poor and the maimed and the lame and the blind." And the servant said, "Master, it is done as you commanded and still there is room." Then the master said to the servant, "Go into the highways and hedges and compel them to come in, that my house may be filled. For I say to you that none of those men who were invited shall taste my supper."
Thank you. Oh, the readings are on fire this morning, thank you very much. Brought it to life indeed. So before we look at the specifics, I just want us to answer some of these questions. So chapter, would you diagnose the feast absconders with grazer's grief?
Yes.
David, what was that?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, come David. Verse, what symptoms did they show? Head downedness or wandering?
Head downedness.
Alright.
Improper prioritizing.
And book, what were the causes of the symptoms?
Someone go on to, yeah.
Sister Smith, you answering?
No, I see Brother Lacount.
Okay, go ahead, Brother Jason.
The struggles with proper prioritizing and business.
Okay, alright, both of them off the bat right there. So let's, let's jump back into this, this parable. And a lot of the times, the interesting things about parables is that the context in which they are applied, a lot of the times allows us to say, that wouldn't have been me. So we will look at the parable and because we know exactly what is being done, we know exactly what point Jesus is trying to make, we said, boy, that's not me. But if we are honest and we actually look at what Jesus is trying to say in that there are times when God is calling us to do things, when God is calling us to place Him first and we place other things before Him. Can we not say that we fall in the category of one of these three individuals? And perhaps with lesser excuses? I know I can raise my hand and say that there have been numerous occasions where putting God first has ended up being fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, probably lower than that, as a result of the things that I wanted to do. Don't know if there's anybody else who can attest to, to falling in that category. And it's easy, a lot of the times, to berate the characters in these parables and say, how, how do you, how do you pass up these opportunities? But are we not informed as to what we should be doing as Christians? Are we not aware of what God expects from us in regards to behaviour? Yet still, time and time again, telling God, the boy, I have to go do this and I have to go do this and I have to go do this and I have to go do this. And Brother Smith, I see your hand, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just saying that these are compelling reasons, you know, you get an invitation to go to dinner. It's powerful stuff. Yeah, yeah, by the land, suppose is, you know, is that, yeah.
Yeah, what do, it's part of them, it not take the land, but it's part of them to the land, nah, you, you know, this is the boy, he has to make a pitch meant.
But having been involved with, you know, our scene, I wouldn't say getting involved, having seen marriage preparation, that one is, trust me, that takes over everything.
Brother Smith, I find it so interesting how Jesus gave this parable. For the first person, he said, "For the ground, I ask you to have me excused." For the person with the five oxen, he said, "I ask you to have me excused." For the person with the wife, he said, "Therefore I cannot come." There was no ask you to be excused, this one is done. Man, I get it, so even if you say, exactly. Even if you say, boy, man, I excuse you, you know. If I make it no day, this one out of my hands up. If I go to supper, the last supper it will be. And interesting enough, sometimes that's how the distraction feels. There are some distractions where we say to God, through our actions, through our behaviour, can excuse me, God? Allow me this, God. And give me, be understanding with me, God. You see me, I, I am, I am consistently doing, so you can allow me here, God. And then there are certain times when we get so caught up in what we believe to be extremely significant, to be the most important thing in the world, where it's not even, have me excuse God, it's, I can't come, I can't do it. Because, and you see, you know, I presume when he gave this excuse, his expectation of the master was, yeah, man, I understand that, man, you're good. And a lot of the times, that is how we present our excuse to God, thinking that God's response in this circumstance will be, ah, boy, I understand, I know what you are going through and clearly I have to give you a bribe. Brother Smith and then David.
Yeah, I don't want to dominate, but I'm just thinking about the, what we call the parable of the good Samaritan, you know. Basically, I never go preach a sermon, how can I stop, you know, to go deal with this, you know. So that's it, there's a need here, but I have a bigger, something that's, alright, it's, you know, it's not idle thing that I'm going to do. And so that can also be a real, real issue, is that prioritizing thing is not as easy as it might sound. Because we determine in our minds, our look to, look at life through our own blinkers. And I think what, for me, what I'm getting out of this is, you have to remove your blinkers and what you regard as, as the ultimate, that this is critical, might not be in reality.
Excellent point, go ahead, Brother David.
Um, for the, for the, for the married man, I think part of the certainty with which he answered this question, I think there is a passage in the Old Testament that says that when somebody takes their wife and gets a holiday period from, from church duties or whatever, for, for the period, and I don't know where it's taken from, but I'm almost sure I've heard that in the past. And so maybe he was thinking that, boy, you know, I didn't have to give an excuse because, you know, the law, the Bible says that, boy, I'm entitled to this right. And sometimes the correlation, that sometimes we use the same thing, we use Bible to justify some of the things that we need not do. And it's not right.
Excellent point, David, excellent point. Entitlement sometimes, us as Christians, becomes our stumbling block. And now, one of our famous passages that we quote about Christian liberty is that all things are lawful, but not all things are expedient. Sometimes we withdraw for passages or circumstances or situations in a spiritual context to use to support the position that we want to take, even though if we really look at the situation, we'll recognise that God has made it very clear what His expectation of us is. I'm seeing Rowan saying, the passage is due to Romans 24 verse 5. "A man has recently married, he must not be sent to war or have any other duty laid on him. For one year he is to be free to stay at home and bring happiness to the wife he has married." Boy, how times have changed. Well, yeah, man, thank you for supporting us with that, Brother Rowan, and David, point well made. So we've looked, we've looked at these cases, we've looked at Mary and Martha, we've looked at the rich fool, we've looked at the feast absconders. And I'm sure seeing these scenarios, we may not be able to directly relate to them, but I'm sure that we can understand the concept of being too busy in our eyes, in having placed different priority on things that God would have us prioritize otherwise. I'm sure we, we know when we have started doing things or going after things with honest motives, with, with intent to just satisfy need. And then that having brought us, having brought us to a point that we realise we have been caught up with the desire for things or for particular things. So Tessa corrected me, we can directly relate. It's not just implications, we can put ourselves in the shoes of the individuals. And this one is dangerous because it is necessary. Grazing for sheep is necessary, if sheep don't eat, they die. And for us as, as human individuals, we have needs that we need to meet, that God expects us to meet. God expects us to, to work, especially for husbands or fathers, to work to provide for their families. God expects individuals to work so that they eat, if they don't work, then they shouldn't eat. I know there's a scripture, I don't remember the exact passage, that establishes that. God expects us to be good stewards of the things that we have. So God is not saying that, boy, put, you know, pray and meditate until you die of hunger or thirst. No, God expects us to live, God expects us to enjoy life. Because these things are required and are expected, we cannot avoid walking down that road. And sometimes it is the very understanding that these things are necessary that have them become priority. Because I need to do them, I, I focus so much of my energy and my effort and my time on these things that they become number one in my life. And as important as these things are, they are not number one or should not be number one. And we're going to, we're going to look at the prescription now to help us to understand what is number one? What is number one and how do I get there? How do I get to a place where I am putting what should be in the first place, in the first place? How do I ensure that I don't walk down a road that I shouldn't be walking down, seeking after something that I shouldn't be seeking? So let's, okay, seeing some things in the passage, in the chat, oftentimes parenting equal grazing. Tessa says, right, we're thinking that too. I would love to say, right, we're thinking that too as well, but in a regionary it. But I'm sure I can understand the concept. Alright, so prescriptive methods for treatment slash prevention of grazer's grief. We have the priority pill, we have another pill to be taking, worry not, these pills do not come with negative side effects. So you don't have to worry about stacking up on too many of them. We have the contentment capsule, which is just another fancy name for pill. And we have paradise prescription lenses. So the priority pill, the contentment capsule and paradise prescription lenses. So we're going to get in to our priority pill. Need a reader so somebody can raise their hand for me, please? Alright, Sister Smith, go ahead.
Therefore, do not worry, saying, "What shall we eat or what shall we drink? Or what shall we wear? For after all these things the Gentiles seek. For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things. But seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness and all these things shall be added to you."
Thank you very much, Sister Smith, well read as per usual. Another one of those passages that have been rinsed and repeated to the point of what I would say complacency. We hear it, we know it, it's regurgitated. Anytime we're thinking about priority and first place. And I think a lot of the times, we miss the significance of, of these, these verses. So we're going to try and see if we can dig in and get as much from these verses as Jesus is trying to share, words being read from the wisest man himself. So let's look at the first two verses. "Therefore do not worry, saying, 'What shall we eat or what shall we drink or what shall we wear? For after all these things the Gentiles seek. For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things." So the first word we're going to focus on is worry, says, "Do not worry." Word here means to be anxious about, it's one of the words that we looked at in depth when we were looking at the bug, we actually read a few verses from Matthew chapter six in looking at some of the issues of worry. But do not be anxious, do not be troubled with cares about what you shall. Do not be troubled with cares about what you shall eat or what you shall drink or what you shall wear. And there are two conjunctions that are used to parallel this verse. So both fours here, the four after all these things the Gentiles seek. For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things. From an English perspective, both these conjunctions are connecting the first verse. The verse thirty one is connected to both of the fours in verse thirty two. So it could essentially be read, therefore, do not worry, saying, what shall we eat? Or what shall we drink? Or what shall we wear? For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things. Or therefore, do not worry, saying, what shall we eat? Or what shall we drink? Or what shall we wear? For after all these things the Gentiles seek. So both of the explanations that are being provided by this conjunction is. Is linking to verse thirty one. So it says, for after all these things the Gentiles seek. Seek after means to search for or to inquire for. Means to wish for, to crave, to demand or to clamor for. So the seek here speaks to not just wanting, not just. Looking for, but it almost gives, if you get the idea of driven towards craving. There's an intense desire that leads you to act. Brings you to the point where you will demand it, where you will clamor for. Clamor here meaning essentially to the point of fighting. Where the things that I am go, I am seeking, I desire them so strongly. That if you and I buck up upon the thing, if for you to get it from me, you're going to have to fight me for it. And if we look in the world today. And we look at the material things, the things we eat, the things we drink and the things that we wear. And we see how some, the way some individuals treat material things. The desire for which they have, they, they go after them. The way it's almost, I will fight you for this. We look at, we saw as soon as the pandemic started and the panic spread out. How people in the supermarkets were fighting over toiletries. Fighting over hand sanitizer, fighting over Lysol spray. Things that once upon a time, you want, oh, you want, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Oh, yeah, no, yeah, man, you can get this one. That kind of behavior. At one point, when these things weren't considered needs, but were considered more wants, you know, dude. Well, we have enough. But the minute people started to feel that, boy, this is something that we need. We saw how they clamored for it, how they craved it, how they demanded it. And what God is saying. What God is saying is not that these things aren't important enough. God is not discrediting or disregarding that eat, eating and drinking and clothing aren't significant. If anything, he is reinforcing that they are by saying that he knows. You need all of these things. That is why you should not be worried. And it is founded in the fact that one has faith in God. So in the verses before, God speaks to how he treats things of lesser value. So the birds of the air, the flowers of the field, and he established how he takes care of them. If God takes care of things of lesser value. And he knows that we need these things to survive. And we serve him. Why are we worried about these things? Because he knows that alone, as far as God is concerned, is sufficient reason to stop worrying. The man who has the capability, the man who has established the intent to take care of you. The man who controls everything knows that you need these things. Not want, not desire, not seek, not search for, knows that you need them. Why are you worried? Imagine David, Sister Sandra, brother Rowan, sister Tessa, since you have younger children. Imagine Joanna or Elliot walk up to you in the middle of the night and wake you up. And says, she can't sleep. And you say, why, why darling? Why you can't sleep? Because, because I don't know what I will eat tomorrow. If, I'm sure your first response would be, but what are you talking about hundred days? There's food in the fridge. There's always food in the fridge. Where, where is this coming from? You, you have, as far as we know, there hasn't been a period in time when you have been hungry. And we have not fed you or given you something to eat. As far as you would be concerned as a parent, this is coming from an unfounded place. See, doesn't have reason. You're going to ask her if she had a nightmare. Maybe you had a nightmare and in the nightmare you were hungry, et cetera. Because as far as you are concerned as a parent, you know they need this, you have provided it. Imagine how God feels when we worry about these things. When we start to concern ourselves with, with the things that God has been providing for us. Time and time again, time and time again. And then he looks down and sees the people he is consistently providing for. Worried about the things that he has consistently provided them with. What grounds, what reason do we have to worry? Do we not have a parent who has provided for us time and time again? Do we not have examples in the past where God has shown us? That he will not allow these needs to be unmet? Are we being ungrateful in our worry? And this is why God is saying, don't worry, because you know me. And you know, I know you need these things. Don't be like the ones who don't have me. Don't be like the ones who don't have a relationship with me. Don't be like the ones who don't look to me. That is the behavior that they have. Because as far as they are concerned, they are responsible for their own needs. That is how you behave when you are responsible for your own needs. That, I'm sure David and Sad, the parents, when they feel as though they are incapable. Of providing the things that are needed for the child, they clamor, they seek after. Because as far as they are concerned, they are responsible for taking care of their children's needs. The children don't have to do that because the parents take care of it. They shouldn't be worried about these things. God is saying, guess what? I am the parent. Leave that concern, leave that worry to me. I will sort that out. Your responsibility is what is coming in the next verse. So we'll look at verse thirty three. Oh, let's, we have some things to look at firstly, before we get to verse thirty three. Says, for your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things. Your is a pronoun and it means of, from or concerning you. It's a possessive pronoun, meaning that this is owned by you. This belongs to you. And I think that that's powerful, that Jesus uses this language. He says, your heavenly Father, not the heavenly Father. Reinforces the relationship between the two. Alfonso Grenell is a father, but he is my father. He's not David's father. He's not Rowan's father. He is not Sister Debbie's father. When I was a child, his primary responsibility was myself and my brothership. As a parent, so as much as he would help other children and help other individuals. When it came on to his mind needs and sense needs, those needs circumvented everybody else. It's those were the ones that were of the highest order. These come first. If I have anything after, then I can give these to others. But I have to ensure that these are done. Why? Because. He belonged to me, Stephen Grenell. Similarly, Jesus is letting us know that the heavenly Father, God, belongs to us. He is responsible for us. It's not an accident. He made us. He is our Father and as our Father, our needs are his responsibility. Powerful comfort to us as children. Because you see, when we take on God as the fatherly role, we will stop believing that. Taking care of our needs fall in our own lap. And that is the main cause of the worry and the anxiety. Because when we don't see it coming into being, we now are concerned that we will not get the things that we need. But because God is the one who's providing the need, there is nothing that can stop him from providing our needs. It's just we not, we see it coming out the way that we view it. The minute we start to run in competition with God to provide our needs. We are going to be anxious because the way we trying to figure it out not working and the way that God is going to provide it, we can't see through it. We can't read God blueprint of how he works things out and understand it. But if we sat back, if we did what God required of us and trusted God to provide our needs. Not only would our needs be met, there would be no anxiety. Having become an adult, having grown up and having new responsibilities on my plate. I have become envious of children. You run up and down, you play with your friends, you, you do this and you do that and you go home and you eat and you sleep. And you don't concern yourself with the, the, the bed that you're sleeping in. You don't concern yourself with the light that you're using and the light bill, your bed. Or like me, you try your best not to bed and you, you, you don't concern yourself with the fact that you turn on the shower. You're not under it on the water, waste on the water, bill go come. As a child, those are not your concerns. As an adult, they become your concerns. What God is telling us as his children, guess what? These aren't your concerns because I am your father. They are my concerns. Stop worrying, huh? Relax. I've got this. It's me. Who you think met the people and were, were charging for the light? Who you think allow those operations to, to occur? Who you think put gas in the, in the bailiff vehicle for him, come take back your TV from court? I am the one in control of everything. So if I tell you that I know what you need, don't worry. Who can tell you otherwise? But of course, we know, we know that we find a way to negate these promises. We find a way to get in our own way, to disturb our own peace. Our own joy that is supposed to come from, from this acceptance. Have you ever seen children playing with one another? It's, it's the, the way they run up and down without concern is, is beautiful. Wouldn't we like to get back to a state like that where we can live? And it's not a, a, a consistent, this today's issue to tomorrow's issue, to, to the next issue, to the next concern, to the, to the. What, what now? And what, what is this? And how am I going to sort that out? We're taking on too much. And as I said, one of the main issues with grazing grief is business. We're putting things on our plate that God is saying, I will put there. We, we're trying to sort out things that God is saying, I will sort out. When we get to the stage where we leave those things in God's hands, we will realize that we have more time to do things that God wants us to do. We're sitting down and we're anxious and we're adding to the things that we're not supposed to be concerned with in the first place. God is our Father, responsible for us, and he will take care of us personally. We don't have to, we don't have to worry. Moving on. Heavenly Father. So not only is he our father, he's our heavenly Father. And heavenly means celestial, or it means in heaven. And it gives the idea that this, it speaks to God's power. He's not, he's not a man. He's not a physical man. So the limitations that Alfonso Grenell has in regards to provi-, providing for me. Mind you, I, I got everything I needed and more as a child. But he was limited. He's limited by, by physical things. He's limited by physical nature. There are things that, as much as he would try to do, he can only do so much. He has to go to bed. He has to wake up hopefully with enough energy to achieve the things that he wants afterwards. He has to work to get money so that the money can be used to provide for the needs. But our heavenly Father, our God, who is celestial, doesn't have to concern himself with those limitations. Every resource not only is accessible to him, but was created by him. He knows how all these things work. He knows the things that we think we need that we don't. He knows the things that we really need that we don't recognize we need. And these are some even more reasons for us to trust God. Recognizing our limitations in identifying our ability to maneuver through our lives. When we accept that our Father in heaven not only can provide the best things for us. But knows exactly the things that we need. And that if we try to fulfill these things on our own, we may get it wrong. It's going to reinforce the trust that we put in him. The issue however, is that we don't look at our own limitations that we, we think we can figure it out. We think that we can find the answers. We think that we can bring about the things that we need. And we try and we buck shuffle and we, we, sometimes we get it what we think to be right. Sometimes we get it wrong. But God will always get it right. Why am I playing, playing the game of maybe I can get this done? When God is reinforcing to me, guess what? Not only am I looking out for you. The person that I am is not limited the way that you are. I know what you're going through tomorrow. I know what you're going through Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You right now, you worrying about providing your meal for tomorrow. I know exactly how to feed you for the rest of your life. Why are you, who can't see past this second, taking ownership of this need? When I, who can see past, future and present, I'm saying, give me, give me. Imagine David, you. You are doing an, a test. You're doing an exam, alright? And you're prepared for it as much as you could. But like a lot of universities, they compressed an unrealistic amount of knowledge. In a short period of time. So you have four years of knowledge, I suppose, to learn in thirty, in, in thirty minutes. I mean, in, in, in one, um, sitting semester, yes, that's the term. You now have to do this exam, alright? You learn as much as you could in the time period, but it was impossible for you to learn everything. You don't know where the test is, the papers are coming from, I mean, the questions. You did the test, you tried your best, you got an okay score. But before going into the test, you had the opportunity of somebody taking the test on your behalf. In this case, it is not illegal. This individual not only knows all of the information that was taught in the course. They also know all the questions on the test paper. Not only do they know all the questions on the test paper, they know all the answers on the test paper. Not only do they know all the answers on the test paper, they're the one that set the test in the first place. Why wouldn't you allow this individual, providing you will get the grade to do the test? When we trust in God to provide the things that we need, we are trusting the individual who knows exactly what we are going through. We're trusting the individual who can provide exactly what we need. We are trusting the individual who made everything that we need. Yet we are telling this individual time and time again, let me do it. Make me sort it out, make me find the answers. That, that don't sound sensible to me. As David said, it sounded like Zoom exam, too good to be true. And when we look at what God promises us, that is exactly the definition. It is too good to be true. And we, we allow that to say, then it is false. Because it is too good to be true, we say it is false. We say, boy, God, nothing can go so, it's too amazing, it's too unbelievable. So because of that, clearly that is not how it goes, clearly it will not work. So I still have to hold on to this. We're not going to get, we're not going to get where we need to get if we don't change that mindset. Open up your arms, give God the undying trust and allow Him to fail you and then say, yes, it was too good to be true. But we don't get there and we never will, because God will never fail us. But the devil tells us, don't do it, because then when he fails you, your whole faith will go mashed up. Boy, you're going to know it, Stephen. This is where you commit your whole life to this God who claims him and go do all of these things and now your belief mashed up. Or when things aren't going the way that I think they should be going, the devil succeed there? This man will say, I'm going to provide all of your needs, where the needs there? Not trusting God, not putting our faith entirely in God is our loss, not God's. God don't need nothing. We are the ones in, who have the needs and God is saying, guess what? I'll give you what you need, we are boxed with God and, and I say, alright, God, we'll figure it out on my own. Not knowing that the needs that we're going after is God providing them all the same. Let us not rob ourselves of the promises of God because we are so caught up on doing things our own way. Priority needs to be on doing what God wants us to do. Not on what we feel is right, not on what we think is best. God is our Father, God is heavenly. And Father here means literally or figuratively. And in this case, it is literal Father in the sense that he's the one who made us and it's also figurative Father, because we also have another Father, which is our earthly Father. And it uses the word Father not by accident, but to reinforce the idea of Provider. We know that in the Bible, the roles that are set out family-wise, the Father is responsible for providing for the family, ensuring that the needs of the family are taken, are taken care of. So when Jesus says, "Your heavenly Father," and not just God knows that you need all these things, he's reinforcing the fact that God is our Father, God is the Provider of our family. Remember this, he is the one whose responsibility it is to take care of what you need. For he belongs to you, his resources are endless and his responsibility is to take care of you. Why, why are you worried about, what are you worried about? Bible says, he knows, and knows here means to see, literally or figuratively. And by implication, it means to know, having seen. So it's the idea of an eyewitness. I know who shot John Brown, because I saw the man shoot him. This is particularly powerful in regards to God. Because what can God see? Everything, present, past, future. So God knows what we need, because he has seen our needs. So the thing where we are worried about today, thinking that it will never get sorted out. God sit tomorrow already and sit the day after and sit, sit the day after and he's letting us know, guess what? I know what you need, because I have seen all of this. You think that you only need for today, I know you need for tomorrow and the day after that and the day after that and the day after that. And it is my responsibility to provide that. Why are we choosing what we can see now over the, the God who has seen it all and it's still providing for us? And then the last word, knows what we need, need here to make or have necessity. So he knows the necessities that we have. And he has established himself as the figure who will provide threefold. What then of us? What then of us? This sounds, as David says, too good to be true. And in all honesty, we have a role to play. And that role we will discuss come Tuesday, because we are almost out of time and I need the password, password. Brother David with the fire fingers, go ahead, brother David. Brother David, you can look for your book, you know, he writes it down. What God said to him, fool? Alright, thank you, brother David. The password for Tuesday is, and this one will be a long one and I'm not allowing any errors. So if you make an error, then you are disqualified from this password. "For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things." "For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things." And aside from just a password, I'm encouraging you to use this as a mantra through this week. When you find yourself getting anxious or you're feeling pressed down by the responsibilities of life, by the necessities, repeat this to yourself, "For your heavenly Father knows that you need all these things." I try, try to use that as reassurance that things will get sorted out. That he's up there, you're not struggling on your own, it is not unknown by God. He knows and he is capable. That's the password for next week. Thank you for your participation, excellent class as always. Looking forward to Tuesday's class. And Sister Hobbs, I know I'm supposed to send you something, I haven't forgotten, forgive me. Anybody else who needs the slides, send to them, feel free to message me and I will send them to you. Hope that we have a wonderful rest of day. I'll hand over to Engel if there are any announcements that are left or brother Rohan. But thank you.
Morning again, thank you everyone for joining our Bible class discussions. Thanks again Stephen for leading the class. In terms of our announcement, please remember that this evening is our gospel meeting. So we'll begin this evening at seven PM. Brother C L Thomas will be our guest speaker. The subject topic, the theme of the gospel meeting is Simple Christians. The flyer is going around, can encourage that you pass these on to others who'll be interested, pique their interest in coming. We also be taking questions. So there's a text message I've sent in the WhatsApp, you could choose to share in your own format or your own wording to advertise and get interaction from others so that this gospel meeting will be a meaningful one, have an impact on individuals seeking questions and answers. So Simple Christians is the theme, the subject topics this evening, why Jesus, tomorrow, why Christianity? And on Tuesday, we conclude with why baptism. So this will be, Tuesday, we won't have our regular Bible class session, but our gospel meeting will end this Tuesday. As it relates to our members' meeting, please note, we're having a, making a special appeal. There'll be a members' meeting this Thursday at six thirty PM. So we're asking members to make a concerted effort to be present at this members' meeting this Thursday at six thirty PM. So please make note of this, mark it in your calendar after our gospel meeting. And on the Tuesday, on Thursday at six thirty, we're asking all members to make a special effort to come to this members' meeting online at Zoom. So the same Zoom link that we are on now will be our members' meeting on Thursday. Then on Saturday, we will have our Navigating Life series this Saturday, continuing the discussion. Leading the discussion is Brother Andre Allen Casey, supported by Brother Smith. So this Saturday, please begin to remind others and announce it. The Navigating Life series session continues this Saturday at six thirty PM. On Sunday, regular worship services, but in terms of special announcement, the Thanksgiving service for Brother Pascal Endala will be Sunday at one PM. It will be streamed live here on this very same Zoom link. So this Sunday at one PM, we can join in as we share our thoughts, as we reflect on and celebrate the life of Brother Endala. At one PM, we continue to lean and give our support to the Endala family at this time. Also remember that watch night service will be week after next, it is December the thirty-first. No, week after next, two weeks' time after Christmas. So it is December the thirty-first at ten PM. And so please make note it will be on Zoom as well. And so mark these in our calendar. And next year, our Kickstarter gospel meeting begins, it will be January the tenth through the thirteenth. The speakers will be Brother Michael Roberts, Brother Dave Osborne, Brother Sheldon Shirley. Brother Dave Osborne will kick it off on the Sunday night, Brother Robert will speak on Monday and Tuesday night. And Brother Sheldon Shirley will close us off on the thirteenth, which is the Wednesday night. These are the special announcements at this time. So Amelia, we wish Amelia a happy birthday today, we will sing happy birthday to Amelia and to all the others who will be celebrating their birthday this week. Sister Marlene will be celebrating her birthday tomorrow. And President-elect Talitha will be celebrating her birthday on a Saturday. And so let us join at this time and wish them a happy birthday. Happy birthday to you, oh happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Amelia, Sister Marlene and Talitha. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you young people, happy birthday everybody, happy birthday. Happy birthday, happy birthday to you Amelia, Sister Marlene and Talitha. Happy birthday. Great, great, great celebration, we wish you all a wonderful week. And we look forward to this evening. As we join again, we hope to see everyone as we have our gospel meeting beginning at seven PM as we explore these topics. Please remember that the lessons shared via Zoom will be available on our website as well as our YouTube and Facebook pages. You can go there to get any recap, if you have missed anything, you can always catch up. Have a good week as we reflect on the, the passage for the week. Therefore, encourage one another and build each other up, just as in fact you are doing first, the Siloneans five eleven. Have a good day and see you all again later this evening as we begin our gospel meeting. Thanks, take care.